Meeting will come to order. Chris Kelly. Come on up, buddy. This young man is from the Boy Scouts, Troop 80. He's gonna help us with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. We can all rise.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, I'm sorry. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
It's been one of them days.
Present.
Present. Counsel Cahill?
Present.
Present. Counsel Capano?
Present.
Present. Counsel Chakutis?
Present.
Present. Counsel Calucci?
Present.
Present. Counsel LaPierre?
Present.
Present. Counsel Lozzi?
Present.
Present. Counsel LeNet?
Present.
Present. Counsel Walsh?
Present.
It's a moment of silence if we can remember John Iggy Dogg and Rodney Seer, please.
Also, the family of Antonette Theo, sister of the late Mayor Tony Marino.
Accept the minutes from the February 28th meeting. My motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Communication?
Do you want me to read all of them together?
Yes.
Okay. From her honor, the mayor.
No objections. They're all gonna be read together.
From her honor, the mayor. Dear councilors, I am hereby reappointing Ms. Jean Curly to the Zoning Board of Appeals as a regular member. Her term will expire January 15th, 2019. Sincerely, Judith Flanagan Kennedy, Mayor. Dear councilors, I am hereby reappointing Mr. Patrick Kalman to the Zoning Board of Appeal as a regular member. His term will expire January 15th, 2020. Sincerely, Judith Flanagan Kennedy, Mayor. Dear councilors, I am hereby reappointing Mr. Norman Cole to the Zoning Board of Appeals as a regular member. His term will expire January 15th, 2021. Sincerely, Judith Flanagan Kennedy, Mayor. And dear councilors, I am hereby appointing Mr. Richard Wood to the Zoning Board of Appeals as a regular member. His term will expire January 15th, 2020. Sincerely, Judith Flanagan Kennedy, Mayor.
It's the wish of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it. Public hearings?
First public hearing is a petition of Fiesta Shows to hold a carnival at GE Field, 691 Summer Street, from May 3rd, 2017 through May 7th, 2017, with a set up on May 1st, 2017. The hours will be Thursday and Friday, 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., Saturday and Sunday, 12:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Counselor, before I get started, this is Counsel Ricky Ford, ex-counsel of Ward 6.
Seven.
Seven, I'm sorry.
Do I have to say my name and address?
Yep.
First Ford, 9 Florence Street. I miss you guys.
We miss you.
I figured I'd take another paper so Buzzzy'll come back and eat in the restaurant. I haven't seen him for a little while. I have one more shot, Darren. Darren came to me and I committed to him to run for sheriff, and then I had to apologize to the other three fellows who had talked to me, and Darren called five minutes later and said he's not running. So, thanks for that. I love you.
So, are you in favor of this, or are you opposed to it?
I'm in favor. Real quick, we tried to go through the EDIC, but we had a little bit of trouble, so this might just be a one-year thing at GE Field. I was part of it for 18 years. One of the carnival's owners is here, if there's any questions. It's always been successful, the city's biggest fundraiser for the fireworks, and good start for the summer for the kids, so I hope you guys go with the English and GE Field Carnival. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else seeing none? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, seeing none? Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did speak with the people from Fiesta Shows and asked them a little bit about having police details there. They assured me they're gonna have all the details that are needed. I would like to approve this with the stipulation that we roll the hours back during the week to 10 o'clock, not 11. I think, you know, 10 o'clock by the time people get out of there, it'll be 11, same thing, you know, so if we can get it rolled back to 10 o'clock, I'd like to make a motion to approve with those stipulations.
Second. Made, seconded. Discussion, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel LaPierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozzi?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel LeNet?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trehant?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes. Motion carries with the... What did you say? What did you want, the 10 o'clock roll back with the stipulation?
I wanna roll back the hours from 11 to 10 during the week.
Okay.
Counsel President, if I could. I just wanted to throw out a big thank you to our former colleague, Counselor Rick Ford. He started this years ago, and he's raised a lot of money for the fireworks over the years. I know, I think they give like $5,000 down there. I think we're having it at English, the guy gives us $5,000, so he's been doing this for a lot of years. This was Ricky's idea, so I just wanted to acknowledge a nice positive thing that he's done over the years. Thank you.
Good job, Rick. Next public hearing.
Petition of Jose Bracamonte, owner of Takea Dona Julia, 80 Central Ave, for permission to add an all-alcohol license in an existing restaurant, open on Monday through Sunday, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m.
All those wishing to speak in favor? All those wishing to speak in favor? Please state your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Yahira Rijo. I live on 2427 Summer Street in Lynn. We are here because it is a real Mexican food restaurant, authentic Mexican food, just like the one on the Lynn way. He's the owner of that restaurant as well, and we will be open from 9:00 a.m. to midnight. And it's more like a restaurant-like family environment.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else seeing none? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
My name's Thomas Demakis. I'm an attorney here in Lynn with addresses of 56 Central Avenue in Lynn. My office building is on the same block as this restaurant. This is... They're applying for an all-alcoholic beverage license. There's no public need for that. I think it's kind of a... That, for those of you who are familiar with it, may have been familiar with it in its previous incarnations as Billy's Pizza, and then most recently as Bernie's. It's a very small place. I don't... Haven't been in lately to count the seats, but there can't be more than 15 or 18 seats in there, and that just doesn't seem to me to be an appropriate place or an appropriate size of establishment to have an all-alcoholic beverage license, especially considering what's across the street in the neighborhood. There are... That's a sensitive area of downtown. There are a lot of people struggling to stay sober every day right across the street, and I don't think it's a good idea at all.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else seeing none? Counsel Chakutis?
What I think I'm gonna do is table this and sit down with the owners, have a meeting with them, discuss it. If it's gonna be a restaurant, I don't think they should be open until 12. Most of the restaurants down there, so I wanna table it and sit down and have a conversation.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made. Table it, non-dbatable, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it. Next public hearing.
Petition of Alexander and Wilder Rodriguez to open a bakery with seating of 70 at Commercial Street. Commercial Street, not 70.
I read it the same way. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? That part of the hearing is closed. Counsel Capano?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing. I met with the owner, and I met with the Latino Business Association. They're just not ready to open up yet. They still have a couple meetings with... At least a couple with the fire inspectors still in the building department, so I'd like them to be able to work that out, just to make sure that they could do it. So, I'd like to just be able to... But I'd still like them to be able to come and speak.
Okay.
So, rather than table it, I'd just like to continue the public hearing.
Okay. Motion made to continue the public hearing. Seconded by Counselor Calucci. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it. Next public hearing.
Petition of Ardi and Macori, owner of Andy's Breakfast and Lunch at 30 Boston Street, Suite 3, to add a beer and wine license, Monday through Sunday, from 6:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening. My name's Thomas Demakis. I'm an attorney at 56 Central Avenue. I represent the petitioner. The petitioner's planning to open a breakfast and lunch place at the site of the old Papaginos in Brookside Plaza. He's gonna have about 120 seats. While that has been a restaurant before, obviously, as a Papaginos, it has never had a beer and wine license, and therefore, we need a special permit from the City Council to put a beer and wine license in there. The petitioner and his wife are here today. They're gonna co-own the business and run the business and manage the business. I think it's a great thing for the city of Lynn. Lynn needs more good restaurants, especially places that serve breakfast and lunch, and I ask that you approve... That you grant the special permit for this location.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Counsel Lozzi?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Counsel Trehant. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel LaPierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozzi?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel LeNet?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trehant?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
No other public hearings?
Nope.
Public hearings to be seconded.
Petition of Bruno's Bar and Burger, 858 Western Ave, for a sign permit. Petition of Frank Peace, owner of Pie and Pint, at 23 Central Ave, Unit 102, also known as 68 Central Square, for a restaurant with a full alcohol license. Petition of Frank Peace, owner of Brew on the Grid, at 23 Central Ave, Unit 101, for a restaurant with a full alcohol license. Petition of River Street Business Park LLC for construction of a multi-use business center containing the following uses: auto repair, auto body shops, contractor's yard, retail store, fitness center, boat construction, maintenance and repair general offices, and a builder's yard shop at the corner of River Street, also known as 131, 135, 139 River Street, and 6 Heath's Court. Petition of National Grid to install one sole-owned 40-Class 3 pole with down guy and anchor with a 4-foot lead strength located across from Pole 66 Jenna Street on town property on the east side of Jenna Street. Petition of Rachel Bennett for a retail sale of coffee beans and drinks at 271 Western Ave, Suite 106, on Saturdays from 9:00 to 5:00 p.m.
What's the wish of the council? Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Committee reports.
That with ways and means?
Pardon?
Ways and means?
Yep.
Do you want me to read them?
Yes.
Just all at once?
If there's no objections, all the ways and means are gonna be read at one time. Yes, sir.
Okay. Order that the city comptroller be in here by authorized to take the following action: certify as an available fund $400,000 as allotted to the city of Lynn Community Development by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs to fund the Lynn Commons Large Improvement Phase Park Number 30 grant. Certify as an available fund $13,175 as allotted to the city of Lynn Office of Economic and Community Development by North Shore Workforce Investment Board for 2017 youth works year-round jobs. Transfer the sum of $9,320.48 from the account of insurance losses to Police Department to fund repair claims processed through insurance carrier to offset the cost. Transfer the sum of $826.73 from the account of ISD for prior year bills. Transfer the sum of $374 from the account of Lynn Fire for prior year bills. Certify as an available fund $189,851.22 to the Police Department by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the FY17 Shannon Community Safety Initiative Grant. Transfer of $16,393.79 from the reserve to the city clerk for unanticipated advertising costs for notices that need to be published. Transfer the sum of $18,859 from the reserve to the city clerk payroll to fund unanticipated retirement payout from the city clerk's department. Certify as an available fund $75,000 as allotted to the School Department, LVTI, by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Fund, FY17 406 Career Vocational Technical Education Grant. Certify as an available fund the amount of $110,428 as allotted to the School Department by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to fund the FY17 Special Education 274 Grant. Transfer the sum of $844 from the account of state election funds to the account of city clerk prior year bills. Transfer the sum of $45,095 from the account of state election funds to the account of city clerk to fund retirement payout. Those are the certified funds, and then I have these.
Yeah, we'll do that one separate.
Okay.
Counselor Trehant?
That was unanimous vote of the committee. Motion to accept.
Second. Although, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel LaPierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozzi?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel LeNet?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trehant?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. And emergency?
Emergency, seconded.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel LaPierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozzi?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trehant?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel LaPierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozzi?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel LeNet?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trehant?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trehant?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Counsel Lozzi?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel LeNet?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trehant?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trehant?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trehant?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel LaPierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozzi?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel LeNet?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trehant?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there an emergency?
I make a motion for emergency.
Seconded.
Seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trehant?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozzi?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel LeNet?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trehant?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Darren. Thank you for your cooperation.
Utilities Committee. Counsel Capano?
Unanimous vote of the committee to table a petition of National Grid.
Second. Second motion made to approve. Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Orders and rules committee. Counsel Barton?
Unanimous vote of the committee. Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
License committee. Counsel Walsh?
Unanimous vote of the committee. Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Parks, I mean, Public Properties?
Mr. President, the subcommittee on the budget was omitted from the committee report. I do have one thing to report.
Okay.
And that the committee decided that there will be a committee of the whole scheduled for two weeks from now, on Tuesday, April 11th, at 7:00 p.m., so that the financial folks who are putting together this roadmap, I believe it's PK Associates, will be putting together a PowerPoint presentation for the council to view and for the public to witness between 7:00 and 7:45, so that will be scheduled here, and that is at the direction of Peter Karen, who we met with. And he will be updating us ongoingly... And he will be updating us ongoing with the budget in the City of Lynn going forward. And we would request that perhaps the mayor join us in late April after she's had some time to review the budget and come forward in late April before our committee. But for the first part was for two weeks from now, the presentation committee of the whole at 7:00 p.m., and that was in the form of a motion.
Seconded. Seconded, all those in favor?
President, through the chairs, that a regular council night?
That is a regular council night, correct. That would be preceding the regular meeting.
Also, I think we should send a correspondence down to the mayor to... Well, as the chairman said, it'll be the following. So she can have time to review it.
I don't think we'd request her till Tuesday, April 25th, to appear at the Budget Subcommittee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Call the vote, Mr. President. That's a motion. Call the vote. We already did. We did?
Do you want a roll call on that?
No. I didn't need a roll call. I just asked for a vote, and everybody said yes.
Oh, okay, I missed it.
Say yes, Wade.
Just say yes.
I heard you say yes. Want to do it again?
Yes, it was by unanimous report of the Budget Committee.
Okay, motion made. Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Public Properties.
Public Property, okay. And we have five...
We have some correspondence, correct?
We have five orders.
Okay.
Do you want me to read them?
Do you want to read the correspondence from...
You want that first?
Yeah. From planning?
Okay. Dear President Seer, at the meeting of the Lynn Planning Board held this evening, the board held a public hearing to determine whether the portions of Wheeler Street and Neptune Boulevard, as shown on the discontinuance plan, can be abandoned as public ways as they are not required for transportation purposes. Motion was made by Steve Upton, seconded by Paul Price, to recommend to the city council that they abandon the portions of Wheeler Street and Neptune Boulevard as shown on the discontinuation plan dated February 28, 2017, as they are not required for transportation purposes as advertised on the March 16, 2017, and March 21, 2017, in the daily item. Sincerely, Robert Stillion, Chairman. And the second one is, at a meeting of the planning, Lynn Planning Board held this evening, the board held a public hearing to determine whether a portion of 50-70 Market Square can be abandoned as a public way as it is not required for transportation purposes. Motion by Paul Price, seconded by Steve Upton, to recommend to the Lynn City Council that they abandon the portion of 50-70 Market Square as it is not required for transportation purposes as advertised on March 16th and March 21, 2017, in the Lynn item. Sincerely, Robert Stillion, Chairman.
We need a motion, Counselor Net, to accept the correspondence?
Yes, I make a motion to accept.
Seconded. Seconded. Roll call.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there other?
There are the orders.
Okay.
For that, that need to be read.
Please read.
Say, everybody relax.
Want a drink for us?
Okay. There are five orders here, so... Order that the City of Lynn accept the grants of easement as set forth in a plan of land in Lynn, Massachusetts, prepared for the City of Lynn by Venice Hangin, Brussels Inc., Transportation Land Development and Environmental Services, 101 Walnut Street, Watertown, Mass. Scale is one inch to forty feet. Date October 12, 2016, and/or with any subsequent revisions to said plans, Sheet 1 and 2, and as set forth in Exhibit A, attached and incorporated herein. Said grant of easement are being given to the City of Lynn for nominal consideration in order to further advance and accommodate right-of-way adjustments along the various public ways. The acceptance of the grant of easements shall be subject to the Law Department approval. Further order that the mayor be authorized to execute any and all documents required by the Law Department to accept above grant of easements. Exhibit A, Parcel A, M&amp;T Realty Investors LLC. Parcell B, Demakis Enterprise Business LLC. Parcel C, Old Mill Realty Investors LLC. And Parcel D, ETA Realty Investors LLC. Parcel E, ETA Realty Investors LLC. Parcel F1, F2, and F3, 40 Federal Street Realty Holdings LLC. And Parcel G, Haven Plaza LLC. Number two. Order that the City of Lynn accept the recommendation of the planning board to discontinue and abandon a portion of a public way known as Wheeler Street and Neptune Boulevard as shown in a discontinuance plan prepared by SMC, 325 Wood Road, Suite 109, Braintree, Mass. And/or with any other subsequent revisions to said plan. Order that the City of Lynn discontinue and abandon a portion of a public way known as Wheeler Street and Neptune Boulevard as shown in a discontinuance plan prepared by SMC, 325 Wood Road, Suite 109, Braintree, Mass. And/or with any other subsequent revisions to the said plan subject to the terms and conditions of the purchase and sales agreement and development agreement with the YMCA of Metro North, Inc. To sell this land on Neptune Boulevard containing approximately 35,000 square feet in connection with the construction of a new YMCA. Further order that the mayor be authorized to execute any and all documents required by the Law Department. And number three. Order that the City of Lynn accept the recommendation of the planning board to discontinue and abandon a portion of the public way known as Market Street and South Street, abutting 50-70 Market Square Lynn, and shown as Parcel H on a plan of land in Lynn, Massachusetts. Sheets 1 and 2, prepared for the City of Lynn, prepared by Venice Hangin, Brussels Inc., Transportation Land Development and Environmental Services, 101 Walnut Street, Watertown, Mass. Scale is one inch, equals forty feet, and the date is October 12, 2016. And/or with any other subsequent revisions to said plan subject to the terms and conditions of a memorandum of agreement between the City of Lynn and Haven Plaza, Inc., and subject to Haven Plaza, Inc., conveying for nominal consideration a grant of easement for public purposes or quitclaim deed transferring a simple interest in the land shown in the plans as Parcel G to the City of Lynn. Said order serves to further advance and accommodate the right-of-way adjustments along the various public ways. Further order that the mayor be authorized to execute any and all documents required by the Law Department to accept above grants easements. Number four. Order that the City of Lynn convey a grant of easement for parking purposes or a deed for nominal consideration to Haven Plaza, Inc. for the above aforementioned discontinued and abandoned portion of a public way known as Market Street and South Street,